Good evening, it's six forty-five and I'll call the November thirteenth Cedar Springs Public School Board meeting to order and thank you for joining us tonight. And if you could rise with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. While nation under our, in it as well.
Thank you, and if you could talk in one of the conferences.
Yes, trustee Bowser here, trustee Patton here, trustee Vanderhyde here, treasurer Gilmore. Secretary Slater here, vice president Shoffner here, president Reed here.
Thank you, and we have a schedule for for tonight's meeting. That moves us to the adoption of the agenda and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So move.
Support.
Any discussion? Debbie Nun, vice president Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slater.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, the agenda is adopted as presented. And that brings the team to the table and that would open up the tables.
I'll start by, I'm so thankful that it passed.
Y'all could've fought for that one, right?
Yes, exactly.
Yes, very much so.
I buy a lot too, I mean, I was pretty impressed.
I'm thankful just for everyone here tonight and it's just good to see so many staff and and we don't always have more than just a few, so it's good to see more people here tonight, thank you for coming.
Like Missy, I was asleep. Honestly. And just grateful, in twenty fourteen, there were fifty-three percent of the voters were in favor of the proposal. In twenty twenty-three, almost seventy-eight percent, or excuse me, almost sixty-eight percent of the voters were in favor of the proposal. So, the twenty-fourteen results were more of an anomaly when you look at other districts in terms of how their communities support the non-homestead renewal. This put us on the upper end of of support, so just really appreciative of the people that got out to vote. The work that Amy McCarthy did to help put together our materials that we shared. Yeah, it was a very, very good morning on, well, I guess it was like one AM on Wednesday, so.
I know, it was early.
Early Wednesday. But no, it's a, it's a, it's a good affirmation, appreciative of the community supporting districts like that.
Okay. We will move on to our high school representatives in the approach to podium and if you can tell us who you are.
Hello, I'm Jayce Johnson, I'm part of the sophomore student council. The student council's been busy figuring out our student council policy with all our decorations, so yeah, it's pretty cool. So, I'm really happy that we had to paint it out because that means we had a lot of very competitive events that we had to decorate, so that's very unusual. Also, we've been ready decorating the halls during the winter holidays. We are also sending six members to every student council. Not each individual, but in total, to the November twenty-first to wait until the student council sign in there. I believe it's ten to one, so I will be going at two oh six. So, with our student council, there's also a this compared world with the career college expo, which I was part of it also, gone with the school, December of the year, Portland, Owen, John Davis and Lundy to the Lions, we're also part of that. So, they and I had also really helped, you know, the business of the college was all set up, so I would really like to say those people really helped out and overall it was pretty smooth.
You did a wonderful job of hosting and directing traffic and bringing water and everything, it was very much.
That is all I have to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us. Thank you. Okay, consent items. I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So move.
Support.
Vice president Shoffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slater?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Vanderhyde?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, consent items are approved as presented. A discussion moving to item A, Fall twenty twenty-three data report with Jen Haberling and the building principals.
Yeah, we have most, all of them here today.
It's a Broadway show.
Exactly, we won't sing and dance that time. Maybe next time.
Yours.
That would be awesome, yes, that would be awesome, we'll have to practice that, so that will take us a little bit more time. So, we have for you tonight the beginning of year data review and each of our building principals will be presenting a little bit of information about the plans that they've made with their building. I'm just going to start from the district perspective and Stacy Boskal and I, with the help of our whole district office team, help lead these administrators and develop them as professionals and give them opportunity to focus. And one of our big quotes this year is the one that you see here on the board and I wish I could attribute it to someone really awesome in education. I can't find an attribution to this quote. Many of the people in this room have said, Jen, you've already said that, right? And I did not, so I can't take that anymore. It just kind of come around my Facebook feed at one point this summer. You don't get results by focusing on results, you get results by focusing on the habits and behaviors that produce results. So, that's what we've been doing this year is in Adventine is really focusing on our habits and behaviors. Some of the larger things that we have been doing as we spend time together, we have developed a program for all of our educators called Red Hawk Ride Alums, that's been a really collaborative process so that every teacher gets to get into a colleague's classroom purely just to study the craft of another teacher. So often educators, we are in our own little silos and we think, I know what's happening in every classroom and when you get in every classroom, you think, oh wow, that's really cool, I could be doing that in my classroom too. So, we're using this as an opportunity and our administrators have developed that program and are scheduling that for all of our, all of our educators before January. So, everyone will have a chance to do that between now and January. We've also been doing some five D plus rubric norming and Dan Stobel has been very helpful in that in taking each piece of the rubric and saying, what does that really mean? What would we really be looking for, what are we seeing in classrooms? So, that's given our team a great chance to norm together. We are engaging in some classroom visits as an Adventine, so so far we have visited the middle school and six classrooms welcomed us there. And Cedar View, well recently last week, and six classroom, classrooms welcomed us there. On deck, we have the high school beach and possibly Red Hawk and the ECC, we might do a combo visit there before the end of the school year. And that's been excellent just for us to talk together about what's the difference between a kindergarten class and a middle school class and a fifth grade class and a high school class. And again, helps us really understand that five D plus rubric so that we're able to get better feedback to the educators in our system. We are studying a book by John Hattie called Ten Mind Frames for Leaders and it really takes a look at ten things that are important as a leader in the district for helping educators to be empowered and the most effective that they can be. And then finally, at the very beginning of this year, we reorganized a bit so that we, instead of doing a just PLC leader kickoff, our MTSS process is so critical to the work that we do here. We invited our MTSS coaches, our PLC leader and our administrators together to have a shared leadership kickoff where they're planning together what's the professional development that's happening in our buildings. So, that's just some of the work we've been doing at district level in order to wrap the data that we are seeing. And we're going to start from the tippy top of twelfth grade and on down to Cedar Trails and the Early Childhood Center today. So, I'm going to invite Todd to come on up and talk about what is happening at Cedar Springs High School.
Thanks for having me. Appreciate you. First of all, I'll try not to read just from the slides, a lot of this you can pick up on your own, maybe you're aware of just some high level results and to piggyback on what Mrs. H said, we're really all about a data process in our building and not focusing on results, but we feel like when you have a process that leads to a champion result and this year it shows the past process what US News and World reports listed us as in terms of the state rating, also showing you the number of students that earned that college award which is quite lucrative, also the high rate on our AP exam pass, that's any student that is a three or above on a five point rubric from college board. And then finally, the thirteen AP courses out of the fifteen that we offer that surpassed the state average with five of them being at twenty percent or higher. It really speaks to a vision years ago that was started here. I believe Ms. Constance had a big part in that as well as district leaders and Mr. Barronwall and really we're seeing fruits of that process that we have tremendous educators in our building and it's exemplified by those AP college board scores. In terms of MTSS and our climate culture, just a snapshot again, it's just one data point, but last school year, about sixty-one bathroom issues that decreased, I'm sorry, two years ago, sixty-one, last year decreased by nearly, you know, fifty-five percent. We don't have the data yet for this year, but we're just having significantly less issues in our bathrooms. We had a K-nine unit sweep again last Monday and I know it's a small sample size because we randomized and randomly select classrooms to go into and then we have dogs sweep the parking lot, but we only had two positive hits. And both of those positive hits came with self-disclosure, you know. Came to the room and said, I have a baby, here, take him, you know, that's, that's not trying to bring levity to it, but it is, it is kind of cool that all cases, the students came forward with it and a significant decrease, albeit a smaller sample size, a significant decrease from the two sweeps we did last year and we'll continue to do that with the intent to just make our school feel safer, more secure, especially for our kids who are doing the right things, our kids who are pursuing their personal best, we want them to feel supported. In terms of what that data says, our real major behaviors are down and that's, that's something to absolutely be celebrated. In terms of some of our initiatives, I think we talked about it here before, but every student known and this is also being done at our middle level, we're making it our goal to make sure all one thousand one hundred kids have an authentic connection with at least one professional in our building. Why behind that is we feel like we can not only help that student academically by having that type of, you know, intimate connection with an adult, but more over perhaps prevent some sort of catastrophic event. We, we did this where I came from, the great results, we're, we're getting there this year, we're going to revisit it at a TNPD in January or February, but it's something that we feel has a very, very, very strong, very robust why to it. Our how, I think I mentioned here before, is we're implementing Mr. Dave Stewart's Moments of Genuine Connection across the board. So, all sixty-one of our classroom educators are charting their MGCs on a daily basis where they're trying to make a connection at some level with every student on their roster. That is a heavy lift, it takes tremendous time and intentionality, but it's something we're committed to do because in order to make sure every student does have an adult that they're connected to, we have to take that time to build those genuine connections on a daily basis. Trying to get through this quickly for my teammates who are sitting here, you can see just some of our data points, six percent above the Kent ISD average on SAT. We just engaged all of our juniors and sophomores that were interested in NMSQT a couple weeks ago to give them that SAT practice as well as allow them to qualify for the merit scholarship, so we're getting reps at that. This is comparing contrast data to schools in Kent County. It gives you an idea of where our kids rank up, rank based strictly on the SAT. These are the ways that we're attacking literacy in our building, both with common lit and a little change we made this year with Mr. Dave Stewart taking over our content area literacy PD to try to make content literacy more palatable across all content areas and he did a fine job that Friday at our PD. Here's our math data, again, this is strictly on the SAT from last spring. Now, I graciously turn the floor over to Mr. St.
Wait, can I stop you before you, before you go? There's obviously some great data in here, some great statistics, I just, I want to revisit the bathroom thing, you know, my understanding is the kids at lunchtime, the students need to ask permission to go to the bathroom?
So, at, at lunchtime, we have six, well, we have two stalls in the boys' bathroom and two urinals, so there's four passes to use those bathrooms, so they take a pass, just like they do out in the classroom, to use the four available receptacles in the, in the boys' bathroom and the girls, I think there's five stalls and there's five passes for them to use the bathroom for, much like what they do during the classroom hour. The, the reason or the why behind that is just to prevent the temptation of more than one person being in a stall at one time.
I'm wondering if you can look into other surrounding districts about what their bathroom policies at lunchtime might be? Because I'm wondering what kind of message that's sending to the students. I have concerns about that, so if you could look into that, let me know, I appreciate it.
What are exactly your concerns?
My concerns are that it's telling the students that we don't trust them to take care of their business in, in a timely manner and, and it's, it's preventing, and my guess is that it's mostly run vaping that you're trying to prevent.
Oh, yeah.
But it's, it's creating excess steps for those students or that may or may not have social anxiety about going up and asking for a pass, forcing those girls that maybe need to do girl business to, to ask for that and so I'm just, I'm just wondering what other school districts do and if they are having similar successes, if they're doing the same thing, if they're doing something different that maybe doesn't feel as icky to, to, you know, boil it way down to simple terms. So, because I, I firmly believe that you have the kids' best interest at heart and I don't want this to come up as an attack, but it, it is a policy that makes, that I, I don't care for and so I'm just wondering if you can bring us a little bit more information about what other school districts do.
Yeah, absolutely, and you know, it's like we talked about with our student voice forum and that building leadership team, our, our vision is to get the doors back on bathrooms, you know, that's how it was when I started two years ago and, and I understand the why behind it, our vision is to get that back, but that's going to take tremendous ownership from our students, which the data shows has started, we're just not there yet. In terms of the pass system, that's the same as what we have in the classroom, there's one pass from out of class at a time. It's similar for Mrs. Fall takes second lunch, Mrs. Tate takes first lunch and she's the one that they distribute the passes at lunch for the boys and the girls, it's very similar, consistent with what we're doing in the classrooms. But I totally hear you, our, our goal is to get the doors back on, to eliminate the pass system, we're just not there ownership wise yet.
Do the students know that that, that that's the eventual goal?
The student voice forum does, the, you know, student leaders we're working with.
I wasn't aware of that part, so I appreciate that, if the, if the students are aware that eventually there's a hope to give them back that responsibility.
That's the ownership we want.
Yeah.
They need to become more, we need to become less.
Absolutely, thank you. Don't worry, I don't have any questions for the rest of you.
So, thinking about those habits and behaviors that Jen spoke about and some of the work with Hattie, collective teacher efficacy has a huge impact size and that's how we started the year was the commitment with our middle level staff is where your two are really joining that six-eight group together. We know at middle level our team has what it takes to positively impact students, so a lot of our work has been building, how do we know each other, get to be family with one another and also be able to provide that, those experiences for our kids? And as Todd kind of alluded to, if you see that bottom picture there, that's really a powerful one. Those are every single one of our team members, all staff at the middle level, looking over every single student name that we have for every student known to really build within each other how we know learners and can learn from one another because different people make different connections with different kids. So, that's just something that we brought and our teachers are owning it and it is great in year one for us, year two for the high school and some of that six-twelve connectivity. But that MTSS is really where we get to in looking at that climate that we are creating at the middle level. We have the expectations are normed, students recognize the branding and the posters throughout the building and if something happens, we speak through respect, responsibility, safety and those restorative conversations are a big time that we try to hold with kids for them to own it. That every student known initiative lives in the teacher lounges, so they have that work as well as some of their goals around it to continue the focus around students. And then, of course, we also have student voice that will go in the next two slides that you'll be able to see. We really give quarterly surveys to our students so that we have their voice and the big thing is we can say we're doing that work for our students and our learners, but we want to know, we know perception's reality and we need our student voice in that. So, early October, we wanted to say, or we asked students, do they have an adult in the building that they trust and feel they can go to? And by October, we were at, you know, almost, or we were at over eighty percent of our students who were surveyed feel that already by October, they have an adult, at least one in the building that they trust, but, you know, we know we need all of them and we're able to take that data and plan as a team, how can we get all students, where might we be missing to vote on some of those to have that collective building feeling and community? And then, the next one is that positive acknowledgements. Do we, how many of our students feel that they've been positively acknowledged? And by early October, you know, nearly seventy-five percent of our students feel that they had a positive acknowledgement from a staff member in our building, so they are seen and valued there as we look at climate and culture.
So, can I ask a question for you? So, how do we define a connection, like do we, is it, the teacher knows my favorite color, is it based on survey or how do we collect that data?
Absolutely. So, you're saying really for the every student known?
Yep.
Yeah, great, there are three things we look for, first of all, we know them by name and face, that's the first one. The second one, what we talked about with our students for connection, it's not just, oh, you like to wear red because you're wearing pink or black or whatever it is that we say. It is, I can speak to, you have three sons that played sports, went through Cedar Springs Public Schools, one of them is up at McBean as correct, as the athletic director, you know, I can say I have a connection with you and I can speak to it a bit more than just something that I could see, like, oh, you play football because you're wearing a football jersey, is what it is. And then academics, we don't just say academics in our class, do we know that child as a whole? And especially at the middle school, having the teams there, can I speak to how they're doing in other classes? Because we're really talking about that learner as a whole and circling the wagon around them. Yeah.
Thank you.
And the activity too, there's three different columns, so staff will go around and they'll mark if they know their, their name and face and then they'll see if other sections still need marked, that kind of helps us identify what common connection that student might have and then how do we need to get to know them better? So, you can kind of see it as a visual during the activity, so it's pretty cool. All right, I'm going to talk about literacy, so roughly sixty-five percent of our middle level students are behind grade level. That is a lot, significant. We have taken a lot of time to look at our iron data and have found that most students are struggling with vocabulary and comprehension and so we are putting an extra emphasis on that through our ELCs and through disciplinary literacy, through professional development, really trying to use the data to, to make data-driven decisions. And our eighth graders are doing a learning lab and that, one of our students reads the preschoolers, our eighth grade building has the preschool classes in it, so we've tried to make some connections with our preschoolers and do some activities with them, which has been really enjoyable for our eighth graders. That's our literacy data as well, just a visual for you. And then the action steps that we are taking, we have a wonderful curriculum amplified for literacy and so we're making sure our teachers are feeling supportive and implement that with fidelity. PD, like I mentioned, and then support consistent practice in all classes, so really coming together as a middle level group and making sure our science teachers, our social science teachers, our math and reading teachers are all supporting literacy in their classrooms with vocabulary and comprehension. And then some of the eighth grade learning lab classes to support our students that are two or more grade levels behind. And then our after-school campfire program is going to be supporting some of our sixth graders with some more reading intervention starting in the future.
And when we look at math, you know, you can see the math data there and we can just go right onto the next slide. And what we see are action steps and it's very similar to language arts, it's, it's almost like eerie with the percentage of learners that are below grade level, but putting much of the same thing there. We're in year two of our curriculum there, so really getting to know it, implement it with fidelity, giving our teachers the tools that they need and being committed to the curriculum. We also looked at the data and those commitments are up that our teachers chose based on best practice, research and articles that they had to be able to focus on algebraic thinking, providing the cross-curricular support and then we also, for those that are two or more grade levels behind, have in the seventh and eighth grade, the learning labs that are very intentional for some of that targeted intervention for those learners to close gaps.
Questions for our middle level?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Sam.
You'll have to excuse my voice, it's not as strong as it is, I've been holding on for like a week and this, today I kind of fell apart, but you're here. And excited to be here and kind of talk a little bit about Cedar View. We're going to start with looking at data, but then the response, because if there's no response, you're looking at data, it's just numbers. And we believe last year, coming into our MTSS team really wanted to focus on calibration of behavior and expectations because if kids are hijacking learning in classrooms, well, that's going to affect math and reading. And so, what we track at Cedar View are two different types of behavior data, minor and major. Major are disruptions to the learning environment for everybody in that classroom. Major are unsafe behaviors, majors are behaviors that need immediate consequences or immediate discussion with me, so they all come through my office. But we also started tracking last year in September, minor behaviors and minor behaviors we classified and were calibrating are those behaviors that just need simple redirections for students that aren't disrupting the entire learning environment, but the minors become majors. And so, what we've done is we've tracked those and compared them last September and October to this September and October and what we found is that the minor or the major behaviors are down, which is also what made minors are up. And so, our response is that we're going to use those minor behaviors that we're tracking to have more proactive conversations with students that are struggling. So, our behavior interventionist, Mr. Reed, he looks at that minor data, that's painting a picture of what's going on in the classroom and that as opposed to being like, hey, you know, you need to talk to Mr. Becker or Tate. We noticed you're struggling in class, what can we do to support? So, it's built our proactive conversations that we're having a lot more of this year because the major behaviors are down. It's also building our breakfast groups, if we notice that students are struggling in the morning, well, then they're going to be part of the morning breakfast group, we're going to start the day off well. Or, we have some very young men that go to recess and come out, come back and they struggle in the afternoon, well, then we've got a check out group. Whereas a group at the end of the day that we're going to celebrate that, hey, you turned it around and had a great end to your day. It also is going to set up early parent communication where I can call, it's a much easier to call and say, hey, Johnny's been struggling this week and we haven't seen that before, so that minor data we've been tracking has been powerful and being proactive. Johnny's been struggling this week and we haven't seen that before. So that minor data we've been tracking has been powerful and being proactive. Um, the other one it does that allows us to look for um and really celebrate the Hawks. Shout outs that we're doing on a daily basis, Hawks being honest, accepting, we're hard, kind and safe. And so not only is it that we're going to attack it with proactive, um, but we're also going to celebrate the great picks to do behavior. But eagerly at CERVIEW. So, um, the next step, we've got things going in the classroom, expectations, students are ready to learn, looking at reading. The reading data at CERVIEW is different than math. Um, the reading we could narrow down a lot easier, one big chunk. To take a bite at. And so our MTSS team this year has decided, we're not going to try to do a bunch of different um solutions to the data. We noticed that fluency is a need for vast majority of our good kids at CERVIEW. So we decided we're going to be really good at fluency as opposed to being mediocre at a bunch of things. And so our response to this need for fluency um intervention is to continue to differentiate the instruction with the CKLA block. Um, focusing on fluency and doing it correctly as we're reading the sections. Um, during our win time, which I don't know how much you guys know, but we changed last year's intervention, now we call it what I need time. So we can target every student in our classroom. So during our win time, we're pulling fluency groups based on what the data is telling us. Um, we're pushing, we just met today, talking more about getting teachers heavily trained to support our lowest readers. Um, and use that win time to attack that as well. And then for kids who are above grade level. Going with the what I need, the win time, we're going to challenge them by having uh book clubs. And making sure that kids are not just saying during this win time, hey, you know, just behave. We're going to try to challenge those kids and our teachers are doing a great job innovating, collaborating across classrooms to service all our kids. When we look at math data at CERVIEW, it is not a one thing like fluency. It is a lot of, it's a very diverse array of needs. So our response is a little different. Yes, we're still continuing to differentiate with bridges during our math time. Um, we're going to continue to encourage our teachers to get trained with the ABR. Um, but we are really going to have to use our formative assessments map. To target the small groups that we're pulling during win time for math blocks. And so you're seeing a lot more change in with math during that thirty minutes of intervention throughout the day, throughout the weeks. Um, but what we're also seeing is teachers, we said, hey, go attack the hot, the kids who are just crushing math. We've seen some teachers go do some awesome things. Fifth grade, Jesse Bass, this class is doing Consequents. She has three gifted Hamilton students that she lets them know when they're doing math projects in the hallway and they're mad and they've got to go back in the class. Um, Maddie Liggett in fourth grade, she has G T kids doing coding during this time. And they love to come show me their coding stuff and I can look silly because I don't know how to do it. So we're doing a lot of really to truly focus on um all the learners at CERVIEW.
Questions for Sam?
No questions.
Thank you. Jen, come up.
Okay, Alfred. Okay, so um we've looked at math, I've met the TSS team and we looked at the data, um, we kind of had a conversation. What can we do to help support um the learners in big picture? So we really looked at it and we decided that what we were going to do is we were going to really work on things that we could do during tier one. That would impact all students. So we wanted to work on incorporating more decoding and fluency strategies. So we then we would see an increase in their Acadian data that would show growth. Um, so we spent some time at our first MTSS, um, teaching some of the Ugly. A real quick Ugly activity that the teachers could do during their learning target or their morning message. So it's not adding more to their plate, it's just taking that one thing that they're already doing. And taking it into the next level to show students how to break the words apart into cultural. We also um are having the teachers um during our mid-time, they are working with our um readers who are struggling the most. And the interventionists are working with more of the middle one. Um, so that way the teacher has the training to be able to adjust and shift very quickly um to meet the needs of the students. We also are spending a good amount of time working on end of the unit celebrations for CKLAs. So for um the animal classification for third grade, they had the John Ball Traveling Zoo come in and they brought animals. And the students were able to talk about them and get a little more in depth with them. And then they just um finished up the Greek unit in second grade and so they had um olive that the kids got to try. And some olive oil and they dipped it in bread, so they were really excited. So we're just trying to. Get them excited about the CKLA unit and that celebration at the end to showcase that and make a real world connection with it. Um, for math, we really looked at um some different things with math and one of the things that we noticed across the board for second and third grade. That students were having trouble when they were going to um counting backwards, especially those decades. So if they were at thirty nine, they could go thirty eight, thirty seven, thirty six, thirty five, thirty four. And but when they got to thirty, it, they had to take some time to go ahead and go to twenty nine. So what we did is we were like, what were some ways that we can go ahead and do that? So when the students are lining up to go to special, they're like, okay, we're going to count and they're counting backwards as a whole group. And we're hoping that practice over time that those um students can um master that concept. And then PBIS, um, we were looking, um, we were looking at it, we were thinking about some of the things that we could do. To help support some of our transition students from Peter Trails to Beach. Just because we have some different expectations because they're become the big, big little. And we have some different things that we have in place and some expectations for them. So one of the things that we have really worked on this year is um having our RTC room up and running. So when a student is struggling, they have a place to go so that they can go there, they can reboot and get themselves back in the class. Also, we live in there, they spend some time, um, if they have had a minor incident or a major incident, they have time to reflect on it. And then also pulling the teacher in and the student this year so that we can lead the conversation to fix those. We've seen um some really good success with some of um our students who are struggling and some of those. Being able to articulate how they feel and it's not just, I'm sorry, but it, when you did this, it made me feel this way. So really including those emotions so that they can identify what it was and how they're going to work um to improve that.
Questions for Jenny? Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Brad Carpenter?
Actually, I got to go first. This year the pressure is on me to wrap it up. I think I like going first, doesn't it? So it's PBIS celebrations for us at Trails, um. About a week or two ago, Mrs. Fisher was named uh WZU teacher of the week, which was an exciting opportunity for her and her students. Um, it was great to get the Cedar Trails and Cedar Springs some wonderful PR. Our PBIS team, we have Hawks walks for students and we are now starting Hawks walk shout outs for staff. So staff can nominate and it's on the lounge. Uh, they fill out a sheet as to who they're nominating and why. And then we'll um put those in a drawing for some um prizes. Uh, we're continuing with our whole school assemblies. Uh, each classroom sets a goal for their own um Hawks walk goals and then they have individual celebrations as well. Um, as I'm out and about in the buildings, I'm looking for students or classes that are uh showing us what those PBIS expectations of be kind, stay responsible. Uh, look like and I'll just take out my iPhone, take a quick picture, email it to myself and I upload it to the morning announcements. So we're highlighting that to replicate that positive behavior. And then looking at the average referrals, um, from this time last year, we have seen a decrease in those average referrals. Coming into the office, so that's been very, very um positive. Uh, our MTSS team continuing to work with Steve, uh, looking at some tier two behavior. We do have a few students that do that check in, check out, so we have that uh connected. An adult in the building connected with a child, see how their warding is going. Then they connect before they can be heard at the end of the day, to see how their day goes. We give them a chance to continue that conversation. Um, and then the second step lessons, continuing working on the social emotional piece um as well. And our end of year goal is to really decrease that thirteen percent of students are still having some of those behavior. Uh, any emotional challenges and those referrals that come into the office, um, like Sam had talked about. Um, one of the things that we did as a staff last week and we uh worked with Jennifer Craig from the middle school. And she came in and she taught uh a staff meeting, she taught all of our staff some of the breathing exercises that they could do. With the class to help regulate them. Uh, so her presentation was very powerful and a lot of good reminders. Um, on some of those breathing techniques that help us regulate. Math, our math celebrations, we've had a seven percent increase from last year's kindergarten score and proficient on that universal um screeder for number sense. We also had a nine percent for first grade and we have twenty one teachers that are trained in EVMR. They shot Laffle light, we give a little shout out to Carl and Sammy and she was still here. They do an amazing job with that training. It is phenomenal. Uh, I sat through it last summer myself and I was completely blown away with how we think about teaching math. So Carl is doing a wonderful, wonderful job with that. Uh, so we want to continue increasing the number of teachers that are uh AVMR trained. There are games that go along with that to differentiate in that tier one. Uh, our MTSS and our PLC leaders have some shared um leadership as well. Um, Michelle Upwell and Evan Solis, two phenomenal teachers. They have a chance during some building time to teach math games and math strategies to um the entire staff. So that has been uh a very positive. And continuing to use bridges to get comfortable with that. It's only the second year of bridges. But I think all of our colleagues would agree that the feedback that we have gotten on bridges is. Is staff is just really loving bridges, number corner, the EVMR games. Um, and it's fun to go into the classrooms and watch those workplaces happen. The kids are playing the games, um, we consider play doubles plus one with them. Uh, but the, the feedback on that bridges curriculum has been very, very positive. Um, Ashley's coaching had, had, has had such an impact too. Uh, she's been a great team in the classroom, helping those teachers with that tier one instruction. Uh, but our end of year goals, we do want to increase from a sixty to sixty seven percent uh first proficiency for first grade. And a sixty eight to the seventy two percent on that universal number screen. So we still have some work to do. Um, but I think with the action steps um that we have, we will certainly get there. Our teachers are doing some amazing things. Uh, our reading data, on the left-hand side is our kindergarten data, on the right-hand side is our first grade data. Um, so as Sam mentioned as well, we have fifteen teachers that are heavily trained. So uh, we did have a meeting with Mrs. H today, we want to continue to increase that. Of course, that's our, and that is our goal. Um, students are experiencing win time. So it's for all students. We don't, we're focusing on our students that are well below, below, but we also want to make sure that we are giving activities that also push. Our students that are at or above grade level so they can continue to meet those benchmarks. Staff is progress monitoring all students. So if you are in intervention, you're being progress monitored every two weeks. But the staff about the progress monitoring students that are at or above benchmark, to make sure that they're maintaining that in that side of that. So that has been positive. Uh, teachers are working to differentiate within tier one, that T K L A block. Um, they're teaching some dot and swoop, so they're saying the sounds and then swooping and blending them together. They're modeling fluent reading. So hopefully when they get to CERVIEW, that gives them that fluency increase. Um, and then this year we have a lending library um in the lobby, very similar to what you might see just out about in the community. Um, there are books, parents can grab them if they need a book, one book. Or um if they have books to donate, they can bring them and put them in the lending library. And it has been incredible to see parents waiting to pick up a child. They have their readings for their younger one, our pickup line, parents are grabbing a book and reading to their uh younger. Um, son or daughter while they're waiting in line at the pickup line. So there's been a lot of good modeling, pushing that literacy out. Again, work to do. Our goals are to increase um our composite score from forty nine to fifty nine percent. And then we'll incrementally keep jumping, uh, and then forty three to fifty five percent as well, again. Not stopping there, but we'll continue to incrementally uh increase. So, uh, our data meetings have gone well every six weeks. Uh, Katie Moore has been part of those conversations as well with our traveling teachers. And those data meetings have been so impactful. Uh, we look at the data, we do groups if, um, if needed. And we're seeing some good movement. We're seeing kids moving out of that most struggling video group up. Where they can still get intervention, but they're moving. Um, and so that has been very, very encouraging to see as well. Uh, any questions for Trails?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us, Penny.
And I will just wrap it up with a little early childhood update. So Cassandra and the team at the Early Childhood Center are implementing MTSS at this time. They are getting trained in what's called the pyramid model, which really starts, starts with the foundation of trained staff. And then moves to that next level of the pyramid of really helping students with developmentally appropriate activities. So that they are learning in a way that also engages them in play. Um, so she is working on that with that team and aligning the PBIS expectations to Cedar Trails. So that they are ready for kindergarten when they are ready to be in kindergarten. Uh, so that's really been excellent, focusing on high quality supportive environment and nurturing relationships. There's a whole rubric that they're using together um through their professional development. We also work with a group called the Early Learning Core, which is um from AmeriCore, uh, which is like an arm of the Peace Core. It's just the domestic version of the Peace Core. And we have um three interventionists who come and work at our GSRP preschool and in our um, our tuition preschool. So that has been a tremendously positive experience. Those interventionists are highly trained. And they, it comes with some coaching from the Early Learning Core group. So Cassandra has been leading the charge with that. And it's allowed us to build a system very similar that will move into our tuition preschool programming that mirrors GSRP. I'm sure you're hearing lots in the legislation right now about universal preschool. So we're just trying to make sure that we're in good shape to, when, if that, when that happens, we're in good shape to align with that work. Um, with the tuition preschool that we have here. Uh, and she would like you to know what's next is creating formative assessments and end of year expectations. Really using the early childhood standards of quality that were released last year by the um. Department of Ed's uh State Board of Education um with M D E. So that all students are ready for kindergarten when they are of age to be in kindergarten. That's the work that the littlest learners are working. Any questions for any of us about all of that information?
Information?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I just really, again, just appreciate you coming and sharing. I love these nights, hearing from you directly and hearing the positive things and what you're working on. So again, just really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your leadership. All right. We will move on with our agenda and moving to discussion item B, new high school course proposals with Jen and Todd.
All right, we have quite a few on the list here for you. Um, I think you may have heard about these at the last meeting. We've got true, for most of them, there's one new one at this time. So just a chance to ask any questions about the course name change for Ed's science. Mr. Willard and I have been working on that. It's just been looming out there as let's change it when we have a chance to do this in a bundle with other things. So really, um, in, instead of calling the, the course Animal Science, we would call it Live Duck and Piggy and Animal Science. Which is more in alignment with the work that he is doing and the textbook that he is using. Which is more in alignment with the work that he is doing and the textbook that he is using. So any questions about that? Okay. And then percussion ensemble, we have some amazing musicians. People here today to talk about that. Um any questions from that presentation from last time or currently or man? Great opportunity for our percussionist.
I did actually have one question. I can't remember. Was there an estimated number of students he thought would be involved with that?
Uh if it's high school, only about the twenty if we incorporate, excuse me, if we're able to incorporate. Eight years um getting shuttled over to high school, now we can have a lot of.
So this is going to help that they'll have to, they don't have to have as much nighttime. And they'll still have nighttime practice, but you know how they're they're out there all the time. So this will help that.
This will, this will kind of continue on with that. Um beyond the night, the the evening rehearsals will take place at the marching band, but then this will continue that work during the school day throughout the years of that.
You're very dedicated.
Appreciate that sometimes.
They can take it.
They, they want to do it all year. Like honestly, if you guys said, no, that you have to unite all year, they would.
And then the last one that is a second read in society and culture and through film and media, and that was a presentation that um H did last time as well. Any questions about that? Okay, I think that probably brings us to the big. So Todd, if you would like to go ahead and um talk about the process we've taken to get to the place where. Um we are offering personal finance as a requirement because MDE is making this a graduation requirement um going forward for next year's freshmen.
Thank you, ma'am. We've tried to pump a little bit over the last few school board meetings with this. We try to make uh some of our new course offerings kind of meet three tiers, and that's even more timely, more relevant. And it's just more relatable or effective with what we're offering. If you s- look at our stakeholder um survey data, it will tell you that is exactly what one of those legs of the stool is looking for. Kids are looking for more relevancy, more reliability and effectiveness, more timeliness. In other words, can today's learning impact either today's uh next steps or future next steps? You guys are well aware that uh personal finance is becoming a requirement with the class two thousand twenty. What you may not be aware of is there are a lot of districts where just checking that box by using economics as that requisite beaver, if you will. Um what I'm very, very proud of of Cedar Springs is we are doing that antithesis of that. We're trying to do what's best for all kids, and it's not just at the high school level. It's starting with Mr. C and Mrs. Mac at the middle level with uh two of their courses. So we will have vertical lines all the way through six, twelve. Currently. Uh we have a student-focused course and a future-focused course at the middle level. I can speak from a father's perspective that it is one of my oldest daughter's favorite classes. Because again, it's timely, it's relevant, it's relatable. Um that's our goal to do something very similar starting next year. Um with our coursework at the high school. So here it comes. Modern Business is currently Cedar Springs High School Graduation Course. Propose that the class will switch to the class two thousand twenty. It'll TP off as an elective. Um and the class of two thousand eight students taking Modern Business at the high school graduation credit as a high school credit. Adult one-on-one, which I'll get to shortly, it'll be encouraged. But they can receive an adulting one-on-one credit from their eighth-grade Modern Business experience. In other, they're on the table. Their check box are, we will still encourage adulting one-on-one because it's because of relevancy, reliability, et cetera. Personal Finance will be added to graduation requirement for the class two thousand eight. Also act as a cap, a credit, as well as the MDE requirement for an I and experience. All these people, I mean, that's one district where our canvas and uh love on that experiences in our coursework. So if Adult One-on-One is mentioned, we add this requirement to two thousand twenty. It'll be a beaming recurring careers course that Mrs. Tanis traditionally taught. Uh it can be taken as a sophomore or junior person. But it will be required. Now for those students who are KC, AC or early-based learning. They fulfill that graduation requirement through their CTE coursework or their baseline. So we'll, if our kids were born uh career track, I don't know, rather than college. If you look at um at the document that Mrs. Haberling put together, you can see the cross-referencing of the requirements. Uh with the MDE and how both personal finance and adulting one-on-one will meet those. And I'll give you just a uh non-exhaustive list of topics that we hope to cover in those courses. And this comes from not just the practitioners, because Mr. Bucin, Mr. Plain, Mrs. Tanis, Mrs. Taborling. Uh Mr. Burns have been working on this collectively, and they can, will continue to do that, force that aforementioned vertical line. But this also comes from our student voice forum and a little bit from our building leadership team to try to gather some outside voices. So again, a non-exhaustive list of what we're covering in these new courses, housing, renting and buying and finding. Budgeting, insurance, credit or credit card or car loans, bank accounts, savings, credit uh checking, debit cards. Post-secondary opportunities, uh student loans and paying for education, resume building, cover letter, cover letter creation, portfolio creation. Interview skills, uh workplace skills, part of soft skills, job shadow, taxes. Being a contributing member to society by registering to vote and jury duty. Communication skills, I kind of craft a quality email. And letters and the basic car maintenance, fix a flat, joke in a car. So we will no longer lean just on Mr. Rainwater or Mr. Jumpy. Really help our people in the part of us. To give you some anecdotal, the tangible data, you know, um. For, and I've said this over the P A to all our kids today, if they didn't attend Friday's Career College and Life Readiness, they missed out. I think Ms. Ree can attest to that. It was a powerful experience. And thank goodness for uh our counseling team and Mr. Barron were pouring themselves out to get that many colleges, that many tech schools. That many employers, that many military recruiters, all of them thought are just our kids. You know, when you talk to those recruiters, you talk to those employers, you talk to those, to uh those college admissions folks, and they said, boy. This, this is really cool. Now, all the credit goes to Mr. Barronwell and our counseling team. But that is what we're trying to bring into our building almost on a daily basis through coursework like this. Another, uh just uh I guess anecdotal, and it's just a small, but I happened to be in Mr. Bucin's personal finance class sixth hour today. It's fascinating to watch present sophomores, juniors and seniors ask so many questions, because you don't see that in classrooms. They're engaged, because why? This time, a little bit relatable. They're asking questions about debit cards. They're asking questions about the old-fashioned check, you know? Kenny Mitchell's up there definitely how to fill out a check for others. They don't even know what a check is, you know? They think it's this uh on a whiteboard. It's, it's fascinating to see that, and we want that to be for all students, not just for the students who choose that as a, as an elective. So we're, we're very excited. I, I'm fortunate to have had experience where I came from. We had this at the eighth-grade level. The sophomore level, and I told this at the senior level. Difference is we did a seven-hour day, so there was more feasibility, flexibility for this. I'm thankful through Mrs. Haberling's mind, as well as the collaboration of those aforementioned practitioners, that we're finding a way to make this happen for all kids here short. What questions do you have?
So you mentioned that we have personal finance. Is this replacing that? Is it in addition to that?
So, did, did you get the graduation requirements? Does that make it? Thanks, Mr. Smith. Appreciate that. So it, it is going to, if you look under mathematics. Can you guys see that? You're tracking that on here, on that graph. So in the class of two thousand eight. The only thing that will change is that half credits. We're not adding credits. It'll still be twenty-two credits to graduate. What this will be replacing is the requirement that has been here for quite some time, as I understand it, and that's that.
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. I didn't, I didn't mean for the graduation requirement. I just meant as far as classes that we offer. Is this going to be a different class than the personal finance?
No.
It's, so this is just uh an addition, a little bit of a change of what it, what's being offered, who it's being offered to?
Yes, so the personal finance will be still with that Dave Ramsey curriculum. Um. The difference will be what it fulfilled or what it replaces with that Modern Business and the adulting one-on-one, if I didn't mention it. That'll be um a little bit more juiced-up version of what we're doing in careers as an elective branch. The real difference is all of our kids are getting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
What other question?
I just, I just want to say, I think this is awesome. I think just uh professionally, my day job, I work for an agency where we do budget classes. Financial management and life skills classes. And as preventative work, we love to see this in, in schools. I mean, just foundational knowledge. I mean, it helps reduce poverty. It helps people thrive beyond high school. So I think it's great.
And to your point, you know, Miss Seville, Miss Tanis, they post mock interviews. I was fortunate to be a part of that the last couple of years. It's amazing to see students grow in maturity, professionalism, way to present themselves, building a resume. What's unfortunate is that was only for, you know, a select number of kids. Now all of them will build those. Uh interview skills, resumes, portfolios, life skills. Very excited for them.
I will say personal finance, my daughter taught her senior year, had no interest, and now she is uh she majoring in it. So, and she like literally during that one semester decided that's what she wanted to do with her life, so.
It's a powerful experience.
Yeah.
Uh we hear repeatedly from students that is the most valuable class they take. That they keep the workload to take rhythm into their adult life. And I can attest my own, that child that is still winning his. Sunny ten version maybe of Dave Ramsey, so yeah.
A lot of credit, all the credit, really, Mrs. Haberling, Mr. Smith, for making this a six-twelve systemic vertically-aligned, you know, vision. I mean, to have this starting in sixth grade all the way up to, I mean, you can see where this can head. And again, the more relevant we make instruction, the more kids want to come to school, the less behaviors we have. Less truancy we have. Couple that with getting all our kids exercising.
I like how you slipped that in there too.
Thank you. Any other questions about that initiative? All right, that's just our first read tonight, so we'll take action on that the next time we are all together. Annie, you're up again with overnight field trip requests.
All right, I would invite Amy Brumwell to join us. And let's see, which one should I open, Amy?
Uh the spring break twenty twenty-five.
All right. There we go.
Right, so I was here last year talking about Italy, and I have yet to even take that trip. Um it's coming up in April this year. Uh but I would like to, EF Tours has been phenomenal throughout this whole process. Um so I'd like to propose another trip for next spring break. Um staying here, going to London and Paris this time. Um EF helped me uh pick out itineraries, things that are appropriate for middle school students. They're helping me with the promotion um when I have to get in contact with parents. Um travel support, and they're going to be there when we check in in April. So I put in the itinerary of both places that we're going. Uh we'll start in England. Uh just in London, I think just keep it to one big city. Um and they get to see all things that they see in their social studies classes or things that they're studying in their art classes. Uh Big Ben and, you know, the Millennium Bridge and um, you know, the power of London. And then the next day, or sorry, after about three days, uh I think it's on the sixth. The day, um we're traveling Paris by train. Uh there, you know, every kid wants to see the Eiffel Tower in real life. Um we'll have a chance to take a booking class, to go to theater. So it's not just uh visual parts. It's uh covers a lot of the different types of parts when we go. Um when, so this, the cost of this is about four thousand dollars. Um the price has gone up exponentially since last year, and a lot of it is the airfare. Um I do have, so the price kind of goes up the closer we get to a tour date. And I just had a student sign on for Italy. It's paying four thousand dollars to go to Italy with us. It's a price of twenty-five hundred. Um so this trip is going to start at four thousand and has to put the airfare. But it includes all our entrance fees everywhere that we're going, our road trip airfare, all our flights. Uh our train between uh London and Paris, all of these, and the hotels. It includes breakfast and dinner every day. Um and EF offers flexible payment plans that you can pay manually or automatically. They offer a global citizenship um scholarship fund that the kids can apply for. It's just a three-minute video about why travel is important. Um and uh they have a risk-free enrollment period uh where they can sign up and they have twelve days to decide, oh, maybe not. And they get like, uh I believe it's a two-hundred-dollar discount within those first ten days of signing up. Um and that's just kind of gives them incentive to sign up early before the price starts to gradually go up. Um I think travel is very important for our kids um because it expands their knowledge of the world around them. Especially for a smaller city like this, getting them out and abroad. Um it helps them feel confident and independent. Um helps them understand new places, new cultures, and discover more about themselves with new experiences. Um and I know that um EF is working with some of the high school uh staff to take, to go to Costa Rica and other places. Um so I'm very confident in um everything that they offer us while we're traveling. What questions do you have? So this is spring break, next spring break, twenty twenty-five. This year we're going to Italy, next year hopefully um London and Paris.
That's a lot of sound really good.
Yeah, it does sound great. We're doing a lot of research.
Yes, of course. Uh always looking for chaperones. Thank you, Amy. Okay, moving on to the Marchy Band Trip to Disney World, first read.
I have to follow. I don't have all the fancy art urban picture. Uh so this is proposing our Cedar Springs High School Bands semi-annual trip to uh Orlando, Florida. This time, this will be February of twenty twenty-five, so it'll be mid-winter break on next February. Uh last time the band went was twenty, February of twenty twenty-two. Uh so we will be going down to uh V M O approach. It'll be a six-day trip with four days at the theme parks in Orlando. Followed by uh two days of travel, one day down, one day back. Uh they will leave on uh Thursday, early morning Thursday, the thirteenth, and then they will be arriving back Tuesday, the eighteenth. While they're down in Florida, they will have a performing opportunity this year, or this trip, we are going to be marching at the Met Kingdom down Main Street, USA. And then they will participate in a instrumental music workshop at Universal Orlando. The last one we did, uh we recorded music to the CD of the Pecs. And then the students also learned about other parts of the movie industry. They made the sound effects, they made the um. All the actor, the voice acting on there with all part of, with all Bay students. Uh so they got to, and while they were putting like a quick demo together, the uh, the clinicians. Were giving them like different avenues of, and opportunities for pursuing careers in the movie business beyond just like being an actor. Careers in the movie business beyond just like being an actor or being a professional studio musician. Um, everything else, like the mixing, the engineering, the producing, all the stuff, they were, they were, it was about a three-hour. Clinic presentation with our kids about the different aspects of behind the scenes of making movies. Um, so outside of those two, uh, opportunities, they will spend, uh, the day, they'll spend the rest of their time at. Universal Orlando for two days, and then Magic Kingdom for a day, and Hollywood Studios. They often get their light paper, so setting kids, spend, send them up some money, they're gonna want that. Uh, the cost of the trip per kid is about eighteen hundred dollars. Uh, a little bit more than where it was last time, similar to Amy's point, it's just everything has gone up, travel-wise. We are working with Jeff Bennett and Bennett Travel, it's our travel company, and the. Part of that, or all of that fee includes their, their hotel for the entire, their entire stay. Um, our motor coach, which are through Compass Coach, for the entire day, all of their food is included. Uh, while we are on the road and while we're down there, and because of the price of foods, uh. Just that is, a lot of that money is tied up in food, but that way too, the kids are getting, here's ten dollars for food, well, it costs, you know, twenty dollars for food, so. It makes, the, the travel company's been really good about taking care of our kids and making sure like everything, all that stuff is being, uh, covered. So, uh, beyond that, we'll be staying at a hotel, uh. To be determined yet, it'll be outside of the, the Orlando theme parks, and then. That covers everything I need to recover, any questions?
Why does it cost more for the chaperone to go, for the student?
Why does it cost more for the chaperone? Uh, I did it based on people per room. But I know because of that was the issue that we had last year, we're working with our music boosters to figure out how we can. Make that more for our chaperone, cause it's eighteen hundred dollars, I wanna say, or is it what?
Yeah, that's, the travel company, when they book the rooms, you pay for the room, which is supposed at fives, when you put two chaperones in there, you can do the math.
Gotcha.
Um, so it costs more for our chaperones, we did not, uh, know that going in, that was our first year, we were, end of the trip. It was awesome and a lot of fun, but, um, we did see that that's an issue, cause we wanna take more chaperones, we felt like our. Ratio of students of chaperone was not good, and so we're trying to add more chaperones, and we don't wanna make them pay more, so we're with boosters and. Have some things in the works to fundraise specifically for them, that isn't taking money away from the kids fundraising for their trip. That isn't true, we're, we're out there working on.
Thank you.
Is Bennett Travel who we typically use?
Uh, they're not the group we used last time, we didn't, like, like Hal said, we didn't, we were handed the trip last time. Uh, so we didn't, basically, everything was our plan for us, there is like, here's the trip, three quarters of the people are paying, everything's in motion. Um, I know people, uh, in the band director field who work with Bennett Travel, I know he did work with us, I think. He has, he does a history working with our bands, it wasn't this, the previous time, I don't know the reason why. What, what the? I don't know, I don't know what the reasoning was going for the other travel company, but.
He's a former band director. We just wanted that.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm glad to hear that you're going with somebody else.
Yes, he was, he actually took, um, so he took Rockford's, Rockford's band to the Rose Bowl last year. And when their flights got canceled, I don't know if anyone heard that in the news, but their all the flights got canceled, like, three days before the trip. And their, their company charged their band out there at no additional cost to the students. So, that reason, I was like, I, I love this guy already.
And it's nothing against the company, where they're just too small, they handle something like that, and so part of that, the insurance that. Bennett Travel can offer versus a smaller company, um, at this point with the way travel is, we look at that as a win.
Going, let's use this one. I wonder what that last. If I can confirm, the Universal Studios thing is really cool. The kids were really into doing that, doing all the movie stuff, so.
Yeah, and, and Disney has a, Disney offers their own, uh, version of that, that I have ice creams, but I was in. In high school band, and I definitely liked Universal better, uni- uh, Disney's, they said there was nothing really wrong with it, they just. They focus more on like the professional musician side, so you basically sightread a bunch of music and they record it like you would in a professional setting where. Universal is more on like the whole, like, movie-making experience, maybe not scenes, not just the music portion. And I love how much more interactive it was for our kids to be in, um, to have different roles in that whole experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you this time again, hopefully next time. Alright, moving to the financial portion of the meeting, we have.
The audit report and my report, out of it.
Yep, I respect for you on.
Yeah.
So, we'll, we'll welcome to the floor, Mike Rabel, so you have an inventory. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike. Yeah.
Go ahead, yep.
Alright, I'm Mike Rabel, I'm a manager of Rabel Capital LLC. Um, I wasn't able to make it here last year, but I did do, uh, the bulk of the fieldwork of last year and this year. So I'm quite familiar with, uh, the school, it's always good to come out and work with Marty, he did a great job, uh, on behalf of school level finances. So, first thing to go over, I trust you all got the governance letter, that's our letter to the board, and there was a couple comments from there I wanted to address. The first one was regarding the fund balance and the food service fund, um, it's a little bit higher, a little higher than the state allowance, and. Not a huge deal there, um, it's actually so common, it used to be a finding in the single audit of the state changed the rule, because there was too many of them. Uh, the other one was, there was an instance we noted in discussions with Marty that the procurement policy wasn't followed. And I believe that has already been addressed with changes that happen, mainly make that policy more clear. Um, in the actual audit report then, I'll just go over kind of very possible highlights, I don't wanna take up too much of your time. So, page one, you will notice our audit report, and that second paragraph there is our actual opinion, and that right there is a good clean audit opinion. So exactly what you're looking for when you get an audit. On page five, this is where the management's discussion and analysis starts, I'm not gonna get into any detail on this, this is. Kind of a narrative-type summary for the year as a whole, if you're interested in reading that. On page eleven, this is where the actual financial statement kind of numbers start. So these first few pages here are more of a long-term district-wide look at the school. Uh, you'll see the big numbers there are gonna be your capital assets, like all your buildings and your land, there are construction going on. Uh, that pension line rule is here, you'll notice that went way up from last year, cause they lost a lot on the market this past year. And moving on to page fourteen, this is where you'll see kind of the information you probably are more used to seeing on a monthly basis. I wanted to point out the bottom of the general fund column there, that's the first column, uh, that eight hundred seventy-six thousand dollars, that is. But budgeted use of fund balance in this current fiscal year. So just to be aware of that, then you'll see the unassigned fund balance of one point eight million, uh, was locked up at the end of the year. The next two columns there are both your major funds, and you'll see those are both all tied in with this large building project you have going on here. So the twenty twenty-one is kind of on its way down, and then the twenty twenty-three was issued this year, and that's kind of just getting started. Page sixteen will show the income statement, um, this. What, three, and the only couple things I was gonna point out in that second column, twenty twenty-one. Uh, building site bonds, significant amount of capital out there, about sixteen point three billion, and that's all the work going on here on the campus. And then that next column over, most of the way down the page, you'll see the thirty-three million dollar bond that was issued. And no other comments, the notes to the financial statements start on page twenty-one. And footnote one just goes over kind of some definitions, some policies, how things flow and how things work. And I'll point out footnote three, that's on page twenty-seven, you'll see there was. Four ends that were covered by debt, um, not a huge deal there, they're all quite small. And on page twenty-eight, this is kind of the back after the cash investment footnote, I wanted to just point out, all your investments are held with B lock, and they're all ready to be learning. Footnote five starts on page twenty-nine, this kind of shows your capital assets, um. I wanted to take a look at that, just with all the ins and outs that there is with construction and process. That's all, uh, the school, elementary, kind of all the work going on with those bonds. Going in and then coming out, see the large addition in buildings and building improvements. That's some of the work that was completed on those buildings and started being used when into the buildings. Uh, page in an O P A N notes, take up the next few pages here, this is all done by mixers, um, whoever's school. Or public schools, they use, it's not gonna get into a bunch of detail on that, unless they're interested in hearing it, I'm happy to go through it. Footnote seven shows the whole term debt, uh, payments were all aligned with, um, the bond requirements. So that's good there, let's see at the bottom of that, on page thirty-six, uh, that's the new bond that was issued. And the next page, kind of halfway down, you'll see your future required minimum principal payments, that's on page thirty-seven. I did wanna point out on footnote eleven, the prior period adjustment, uh, this wasn't anything that was done wrong, there wasn't due accounting standard that was implemented. SCAB ninety-six requiring us to put information technology subscription-based arrangements on the data sheet table. Uh, page thirty-nine is where kind of some other supplemental information starts, you'll see some budget-to-actual statements. Some more pension information, and then we'll get into more of the combining fund statements. That's where all your smaller funds, kind of have detail, the small, non-major funds are on page forty-six, if you wanna take a look at those. Um, they're all quite small, we didn't notice anything, I'm going to allow those. So I will keep on moving. Our audit report, kind of in the single audit section hour, on page fifty-one. And that first report on page fifty-one is where we would have reported the internal control deficiencies that we found, and we did not find any. So this is a pretty clean standard report. On page fifty-three, near the top, you'll see another good clean audit opinion, this opinion is specific for the federal programs that we audited. As part of the single audit, and I'll get to what program that was, just a moment here. Page fifty-five is the start of the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, also known as the CIFA. So that goes about three pages, you can see at the bottom of page fifty-seven, uh, the district. Spent four million nine hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars of federal funds this year. Uh, something to keep in the back of your minds here is that, right around, maybe just under two million dollars of that was all kind of this COVID. Estor Arco money, so just be aware of this. You never know what's happening with that. On page fifty-nine, uh, this is our singular results, you'll see a whole lot of X's on the no column there. Uh, that's good, that means we didn't have any issues, about halfway down the page, you'll see the CFDA numbers that we audited. And that's all kind of tied into the programs, so we looked a lot at that this year. And then you'll see none noted for section two, three, and four there, and that's all good, that means we had no findings. Uh, is there any questions that I can answer?
So this means Maddie did a good job.
Yes. Thank you, that's right, yes, thank you for that again, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, Marty, I mispronounced your name.
The financial reports, um. Hopefully, you each had an opportunity to review the budget to actual through general fund, again, um. Right now, we are operating in the deficit, we will start doing some of our federal draws that will start to eat away at that deficit. As well as, we will now be receiving our regular monthly state aid payments. We receive the first one in October, the next one is scheduled, uh, for next Monday, we'll receive the second of our state aid payments. I believe tomorrow, Amy will be submitting our, uh. Ball count to the state, or to the highest deeper review, um, what I have here is currently the un-audited. Count data, a couple of things to highlight, uh, right now, our FTE count, un-audited is. Three thousand nine hundred, or three thousand ninety-three point six five, uh, so that would represent about a increase of. Was that ninety? EE from the spring two thousand twenty-three count. Uh, you do the math to calculate the state aid membership, uh, that represents a ninety-nine point seven seven. Decrease in our FTEs that we collect state aid revenue on. Um, as I mentioned back, uh, previous meetings, there is the state aid enrollment stabilization for this one year, so we will then. Kind of get an additional, uh, forty-nine point eight nine FTEs that we'll receive. Per people funding for, so that definitely will, uh, help the, the decrease in our enrollments, um, but. Uh, right now, that's a one-time kind of gift from the, the state, so we can't, cannot count on that for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And really easy calculation, it's a lot more comp- complicated than what I've presented here, but if you just took the. Ninety-nine point seven seven and multiplied it by the per people, uh, foundation allowance. And we're just under a million-dollar loss in our state aid funding, that's the, that's the extremely simplified version of it. Um, then we make up about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for that with the, um. Enrollment stabilization. Couple things that we did not necessarily budget for, which in a positive, is that there are two, uh. Additional categoricals that the state has, uh, included in the budget. First one being section twenty-three G, the My Kids Back on Track, uh, right now, we're projecting funding of. Five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars for that categorical, so Jen and I worked together and, uh, submitted a, uh. Budget, an application to the state, uh, really just to continue funding some of our initiatives such as. Uh, Eble, CK, LA, uh, our reading and math interventionists, as well as our instructional coaches, the champions. So really, this will allow us to continue, uh, doing that, uh, great work. And we'll be using these funds in the, we can defer it to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, because. By likelihood, we won't know what we're really getting until March of next year. Um, the other large categorical that they included was section thirty-one AA, mental health and school safety. Uh, we're projecting funding of approximately, uh, six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Uh, from this categorical, half of that has to be used for, uh, student staff, mental health. Uh, related initiatives, and then the other half can be used for school safety. So, for this one, I'm working with, uh, Stacy and Russell to put together an application that we'll be submitting later this month. It's due on the December tenth, um, for the mental health aspect. We are currently have school nurses, counselors, and psychologist positions that are being funded via Estor and other. State grants that will be going. We are currently have school nurses, counselors, and psychologist positions that are being funded via S R and other state grants that will be going away. We will then be able to use the, this thirty-one AA funds to um have. Start filling in those gaps as those other funding sources go away. Uh, and then there's also a pretty extensive list of trainings that Stacy is, is working on for our staff. Um, to obviously focused around student mental health and wellbeing. On the school security side, um, we did receive that section ninety-seven B school resource office or uh grant last year. That covers fifty percent of deputy prices. Uh, physician will use uh these funds to cover year two, the fifty percent of year two of that contract. Uh, and then we'll be able to kind of hopefully finalize our camera, security camera initiative and get coverage throughout the district. Um, as needed, so we can use these funds for the procurement uh. Installation and integration of those cameras into the existing system. And this is on top of the cameras that we prepared last year using section ninety-seven ones. Um, so that's really all I have, any, any questions?
So we talked about the student count, uh, date of the down eighty, I know we had talked about Kent County as a whole was kind of dropping in. In the number of residents. Have we done any, do we know what the, what our peers are doing in the ISD, or is that kind of across the board, or is that?
It, it's across the board, the, the south side of Grand Rapids is doing a little bit better. You say that's fair enough?
Yeah. Oh, uh, approximately um twenty-five thousand students have, are not enrolled in the Kent County now than. Uh, were, were enrolled in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Um, the north side of the county is experiencing greater uh declines in enrollment. Than the south side, Catala, or excuse me, um, Byron Center. Caledonia, Granville, those districts are stable, still growing, uh, two to three percent. Per year, um, the north side districts have definitely slowed, a lot of it is related to economic conditions and housing opportunities for families, there's just. Not as much mobility. Um, and not as much affordable housing. Uh, some of the outlined communities, right?
And I believe the Washington Post just did a. Released an article regarding homeschooling in this study, now Michigan was not included in the study, but uh. Forty-seven percent increase in homeschooling. Throughout uh Midwest states, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Ohio, Pennsylvania, Michigan wasn't included, but. Basically, the combination, domination of homeschooling is definitely on a rise and did not. I think everybody expected, you know, it to be years in that, parents are really, oh my gosh, this is really hard. To do, um, and they sending their kids back, but that trend hasn't really materialized yet, so.
Thank you.
And I think it's one of those things, you know, as we look to budget uh into the future. It's um. It's one of those things now that, you know, bigger isn't necessarily better, smaller isn't necessarily better, we, better is better, and this is, you know, we've got to raise science. Um, so I mean, we'll have to make additional reductions instead. We, as we move forward, the challenge is that. You know, as we continue to move in that direction, it will ultimately start impacting the program. Uh, because we just don't have enough efficiency uh across the board. To maintain some of the programs, and so then, you know, we've got to be creative and look at ways, how can we part of? You know, how can we do, you know, create a coalition with Kent City and Sparta, what can we do together? That, you know, to help still provide those robust programs for our students.
Thank you. One comment on the financial statement, the single audit, I just want to thank and recognize Jen and her team for the role that they play in the federal compliance that the district does. Jen is uh very much on top of federal compliance, making sure that we're doing the right thing and staying compliant, so uh. The clean opinion on this. Uh, she played a major role in, in that, so, thank you, Jen.
Okay, so we go from finance into policy, Scott, you've got the floor.
Twenty thousand foot view, super quick. Um, tonight's a first introduction to the fall on the old policy updates, uh, these are all recommendations. We'll dig into them in greater depth in December and then look for action um in January. Uh, just to put some things out there for you, uh, the vast majority of them uh are really related to either clarification of language. Um, or uh legal changes that have taken place here in Lansing or uh in Washington. So, I'm really tonight, I, I just got the bulk of them loaded today, so no expectation on your part to have mastery level knowledge on them. Um, one thing, uh, one policy that, that is, that did not come out of Neola, but just came out of our. Personal experience, uh, that I want to bring your attention to, we did not have any policy language related to strictly fundraising. There was a policy called crowdfunding, um, and that was sixty-five oh five. Well, we didn't really have anything uh to help govern our fundraising, we're oftentimes asked. To raise funds or to participate, supporting a fundraising effort for a particular family or a particular student or an individual. And so, um, the language that we came up with, um, is really a blend of what other, what we've seen some other districts are doing, but also just some common senses. Common sense approaches, uh, so that it provides uh us with some consistency from one aspect to the next. That way the district isn't necessarily uh responsible to raise funds. For a given individual or a given cause, but we would be able to support that by, um, you know, sh- sharing the information on social media. Or, or things like that, so we just want to try and be as consistent as possible, uh, because we do get a lot of asks for support for individuals. And for programs that are not directly related to Cedar Springs Public Schools.
So it looks, it looks like it's been hit from Neola?
Um, it did not come from Neola, that's, that's originally, the original crowdfunding. Policy came from Neol.
Okay.
That was sixty-six oh five.
Okay.
The policy that's in draft form, um, is a replacement to that uh policy. What we tried to do is just take common sense approach, this is our practice in regarding, uh, in regards to fundraising efforts. And um. Just try to, try to have the policy language mirror what we currently do as far as. Uh, when we're asked to help to support a fundraising effort that's not related at all to a classroom, a group of students, or a school program.
Uh, policy seventy-two seventeen, the drafting note on there, tell me if I'm wrong, does that basically say in layman's terms? Here's some verbiage if you want to use it, but we're not going to back you up in court. Is that what the drafting note says basically?
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly.
Yes.
Thank you. They don't always read it equally as well, so.
One more discussion going forward. All right, so we'll move forward then, this is the time to have a comment. Barb, do you have any one that would like to address the board, other comments, I think that anybody would like to rest the board for three minutes?
I would, okay, um, having planned and been on four high school band trips. And I have nothing against Bennett Travel, I don't know anything about them, were there other quotes received besides Bennett Travel? That's the only question, I'm, I don't expect you to answer any of them, so.
Thank you, yes. Band personally. And it's Patricia Airey for anybody listening. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to our action items for this evening. And we have three action items, they're all new course proposals. So I would entertain a motion for as presented for all three.
So moved.
Support. And discussion. Debbie Nunn, Vice President Shocker?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore?
Yes.
Trustee Haderheim?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
Uh, approved, has submitted. And communication pieces, I don't have any open communication, have it received? Do we have any?
Sure.
Okay.
It was, it was a fun, delicate assembly, as usual, uh. It did not have that forty-five minutes uh debate uh first, but it did last year, but it. It was still fun, so, uh. All of their proposed uh amendments to, I don't know if you guys have to take a look at it, if they'll get handled. Um, but all of their proposed um amendments did pass. So those are my approved, they're now in handling. Feel free to take a look at those, there was a little bit of amendment to one of, one of them, uh, clarifying. Just taking out some unnecessary language as far as. I would turn it on here exactly what it was, but something in regards to parents' involvement and, and student. Something, so, um, but yeah, I, I think that all the revisions should be online.
Thank you for going and representing.
Yeah.
Do you have any comments for us, Mr. Smith?
I just a couple of quick updates, uh, so again, um. I think with the funding team, I identified that gap in our procurement procedures and I assure you that. I, I didn't have anybody. Appreciate the work that Marty has done and also, um, just the, the diligence and the opportunity that we have to help. Identify a gap in our uh practice and make correct action to get it going, so that's, that's a good thing and. But it's uh in the, you know, in the audit uh letter. Um, the Director of Academic Services uh search is going well. Uh, we had thirty applicants submit uh their materials for us to consider last Tuesday, last Thursday, excuse me, we viewed. Seven uh candidates for the position, we've narrowed that search down to three individuals at this point in time. Are all very unique candidates, uh, very different backgrounds, different sets of experiences. Um, that all could be uniquely very successful in the war. One of the individual had shoulder surgery on Friday and so will not be available uh for us. Um, or really to be able to be at their best uh until next week and with a, really a two-day week, we're, we're going to push that round of. Uh, conversations with uh candidates back to the week of the twenty-seventh, so we'll be re-engaging with candidates in twenty-eighth. In hopes of adding some uh clarity, uh, uh, you know, shortly within the window. Um, and then have a recommendation to bring forward uh in December and then I have the candidates start. Uh, for this uh as quickly as, you know, over, over, we break over, uh, we have a first year. So that is one day, the other update is, uh, we continue to work on our book selection process. Um, we implemented a significant amount of work around, um. How we look at materials that are in our classroom libraries and that really on the shoulders of the work that Jen has done the last. Two years, one area which, um, there's an opportunity for us to improve is around, you know, what, what titles are we actually purchasing, what are we actually buying? Um, and I'll be sharing with the board in December, an update based on some work that Virus Center is doing. Uh, around their purchasing protocols uh for books for the classroom libraries, so they use. Um, a rubric that they've developed, um, based on, uh. Both views and reviews from common sense media and, um, the, the Tina Buck Center is very excited about. Um, how those guidelines are just helping to inform uh decisions that teachers and teams are making around. Uh, buying the right materials uh for our classroom libraries, so further update for you in December.
All right, thank you. Moving forward for planning, our next meeting is December of October, and there, we have one meeting scheduled for December, and then, and, 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 and. And having more business before the board, we will stand adjourned at exactly eight thirty.